Call the meeting to order and we'll stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. I'll have the clerk please call the roll.
Supervisor Fountain, here. Treasurer Horning, here.
Here.
Trustee Chilkey, here.
Trustee Colain, here.
Trustee Germain, here.
Trustee Harper, here.
Trustee Petrucci, here.
Thank you. Item number four is approval of our meeting agenda.
Some who support.
Motion by Treasurer Horning, seconded by Trustee Germain. Is there any discussion?
No, not by me.
Meeting agenda. Consent agenda.
Well, we can move that at the consent agenda.
Uh huh.
Or should we move-
Either time.
Either time.
Yeah. Okay. Um, I'd like to move the, um, authorized supervisor to sign the Heritage Park Agreement out of the consent agenda, move it down to nine E. Uh, there are some changes that we need to make to that agreement.
You still support that?
Yes.
Any other discussion? Being on, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay. Motion carries. And before I go to call out the public tonight, I just wanna, uh, just read a few things, a few notes, just, uh, just so everybody's aware. Uh, many of you, I'm sure, here tonight, uh, to, um, regarding the proposed development on M-59 and Clark Road, uh, this road, or this project is being thoroughly vetted between the planning department review, a public hearing, planning commission review, and eventual review by this body. We will take all information into consideration. We do not make hasty decisions when it comes to development in our community and township. I want to let you know that the board appreciates your participation in this meeting. We always encourage residents to attend our meetings and to share their thoughts on any number of topics that affect our township. In order to respect everybody's time, I'm gonna ask this evening that comments not be repeated. I assure you that the board understands that all of you are like mine when it comes to this topic, and it is duly noted. Uh, our guidelines for our public hearings are, um, call of the public, excuse me, is there is an opportunity to share your thoughts with the board. This is not a formatted discussion. If we do not respond to your comments, it doesn't lessen the impact on their, uh, doesn't lessen their impact in the least. All comments must be limited to a maximum of three minutes. Again, um, if someone's already made some comments, uh, please don't repeat it because we do have a full agenda tonight. But again, it's a call of the public, so if you'd like to come forward, we just ask that you state your name and address. And, um, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Heidi Meisterfeld, and I live at 2368 Matthew Court, and I've written everything down, so I might repeat a little bit, but I'm gonna go quick, okay? Since this project has come to light referring to the gas station, many residents have gotten up and spoke about their concerns. While discussing flooding, one of the board members brought up the flood of your own parking lot. This happened due to an oversight. Imagine Heritage Meadows, which is surrounded by wetlands flooding. Royal Oak flooded last year due to the heavy rains and insufficient draining system. Some of my family lived in Royal Oak, and I saw firsthand all of their belongings piled ten feet high out on the curb. Now try to imagine an entire neighborhood being flooded out. We can avoid this. Another concern about the gas station being so close to the subdivision. It has to do with more than the gasoline and its fumes, it has to do with the spill seeping out into our water supply. It's about the leaking of the underground storage tanks, and God forbid something worse. This is something that we can avoid. Another concern about the sound has been brought up before, but we're more referring to that the speakers are gonna be kept at a moderate level, and that's fine. But what about the customers yelling at the speakers at 3:00 AM? What about the cars' loud exhaust and their stereos with their kickers? You know all that bass that makes your insides rattle? This is something that we can avoid. We've been told over and over that this company has the right of return on their investment. Well, what about our right of return on our investment of eighty-four homes? I've come to you with your own ordinance about nuisances and how this gas station will be violating them. Ordinance seventy-eight, section two, talks about it in a great deal. While talking with a lawyer, I have learned that Michigan law also defines a nuisance in almost the same way. There are private nuisances, which refers to the quiet enjoyment of your land. Violations of this law are foul odors, noxious gas, smoke, loud noises, and excessive lighting. There are public nuisances, too. Broadly stated, it is an act, occupation, or a structure that is at all times and under any circumstances considered hurtful to the health, tranquility, or the morals of the community regardless of location or surroundings. We have been collecting signatures from the sub and shows that everyone agrees with everything I've said tonight. Isn't it the job of the planning committee to plan our future? Adding another gas station is only helping Heartland to be a pit stop along the highway, not a destination. At the previous meetings, voters referred to this problem by calling it an armpit, a mass car race, a punching bag for the rich, or as the police like to call it, a stop-and-rob. This business is asking for two special use permits, one for the drive-through and the other to pump gas. Why ask for a special use if no one is willing to say no to this project? Menards wanted to move here. This township said no because it didn't fit well with the neighbors. Menards wasn't even going to be open twenty-four hours a day. You have the ability to say yes to this citizens. If you ignore everything that's been brought in front of you, you are knowingly inviting and bringing this nuisance to our backyards. You, the trustees, have the power to help us. You should trust that, we should trust that you would do right by us. The trust did not put a gas station in someone's backyard and the trust to stop a twenty-four-hour drive-through that would bring unwanted noise and mayhem to this area. This area is owned commercial, not industrial. I didn't move next to the airport or a factory. People need to sleep at night, they need to breathe clean air, and they need to go to work without incident so they can get up and earn money and pay their taxes. If this business closed at eleven and had a traffic light, most of us would not be here, but none of that matters. You have been voted in to help shape this community. You can stand up and say no to these people and yes to this quiet, peaceful community, and that's what really matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hello. My name's Dale McKim. I live at 11085 Matthew Lane in Heritage Meadows, and I have a prepared, uh, presentation here. Well, not a presentation, but a little paper. So tonight I wanted to discuss the significant health hazards gas stations pose to residents that live close to gas stations, that is within two hundred meters, which is certainly, um, part of Heritage Meadows. From an article in Scientific American dated April of two thousand nine, "Despite all the modern health and safety guidelines they must follow, gas stations still pose significant hazards to neighbors, especially to our children." One of those risks is ground-level ozone caused by gasoline fumes. Most gas pumps today must have government-regulated vapor recovery boots on their nozzles to limit the release of these gas vapors while one is refueling. While mug and bobs will certainly claim that their gas pumps will be maintained to meet these government regulations, they will have no control over the refilling tankers or the general public filling their portable gas containers every day. These nearly odorless hydrocarbon fumes contain harmful chemicals like benzene. Researchers from the University of Mercia measured the levels of two common gasoline pollutants, benzene and hexane, in the area around gas stations. They then compared these levels to the contamination caused by normal automobile traffic and found higher levels in the areas around gas stations. Secondly, from an article in NewScientist.com dated August twenty-first of oh-four, researchers from the National Institute of Health and Medical Research in France found that children who live next to a gas station are four times more likely to develop acute leukemia than other children in the same area that are not next to the gas station. Thirdly, from the Johns Hopkins Bloomberg School of Public Health dated October seventh of two thousand fourteen, their study suggests that drops of fuel spilled at gas stations, which occur frequently with fill-ups, cause long-term environmental damage to the soil and groundwater in residential areas in close proximity to these gas stations. Conservatively, these researchers estimate a typical gas station spills fifteen-hundred liters of gas every ten years. This equates to filling seven-hundred-and-fifty-two-liter Coke bottles every decade and dumping it into the backyard of Heritage Meadows. Even if only a small percentage reaches the ground, this could be problematic because gasoline contains the harmful chemicals known as benzene, which is a known human carcinogen. And the last topic I wish to discuss is on vapor intrusion, and this comes from the Wisconsin Department of Health Services dated May eleventh of two thousand fifteen, just a few months ago. Vapor intrusion is a way that chemicals in the soil can get into indoor air. Gas spills from filling up your tank, like I just talked about earlier, either from, and, and we could either have rain runoff or seeping through the concrete make their way into the soil. And as a reminder, this proposed gas station and lots two and three of Heritage Meadows share the existing wetlands. These vapors then move up through the soil and into nearby homes. The health effects from vapor intrusion are eye and respiratory irritation, headache, and/or nausea. However, health officials are most concerned about low-level exposure over many years, as this may raise a person's lifetime risk for developing cancer. Please verify these claims that I have presented tonight, and by all means do your own research. I am confident you will come away with the same conclusions that placing a gas station next to Heritage Meadows is a health hazard to its residents. I plead with this group to consider the health of the residents of Heritage Meadows and not allow a gas station to be developed on this site. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else this evening? Good evening.
Uh, my name is Amy Medbury. I live at 11108 Matthew Lane. Pretty much everything has been covered, or, so not to repeat topics. The only concern over the gas station, there's a couple of concerns I have, um, that have not been, I don't think, mentioned. It's hard to hear back there. Um, one of my biggest, other than the fact that it's on top of our neighborhood, um, what bothers me is what Heartland Township brings to Livingston County at this point, and I see absolutely nothing. We all go to Heartland and Brighton to shop in specialized stores, nice downtowns, and all we have to offer are dime stores and gas stations. I'm disappointed. I remember when the oasis existed. I feel that's the direction that we're going into again. Another gas station only offers convenience for freeway, uh, traffic, and that's all we're gonna get from that. Nobody from Brighton, nobody from Howard are gonna drive to the Baskin-Hopkins in Heartland. The only attraction are the local people who don't even want it, and then our highway traffic. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else this evening? Good evening.
Jeff Gazarovski, uh, also in Heritage Meadows. I'd like to start by, uh, thanking, uh, Trustee Petrucci and Treasurer Horning for reading and responding to the, uh, vision of Heartland that I sent earlier, uh, over the weekend. It was nice to know that you guys are paying attention to the residents to some degree. Um, I'm not gonna go over what's already been gone over, but I do wanna point out a couple of things that, uh, I just learned about noise. I'm not sure, uh, many people actually know this, but the way decibel levels are measured is every ten decibels is twice as much, kinda like the Richter scale. Uh, so if you go from fifty-five to sixty-five, there's twice as much noise. The, uh, Heartland zoning ordinance stipulates that, uh, during the daytime, that those levels are to be no more than sixty-five decibels, and between seven PM and eight, and seven, six PM and seven AM, it drops down to fifty-five decibels. Comparatively, uh, a passing diesel truck, and I found this in two different sources, is eighty-five decibels. That's twice what the daytime, uh, sound level allows. A motorcycle is a hundred decibels. That's either three and a half or four and a half times the allowable noise set by the Heartland, uh, zoning. If you guys pass this, you are knowingly exceeding the Heartland zoning regulations. That gives the two properties at least, uh, that will back up to this development enough ammunition to bring suit against the township. And I know you guys are concerned about lawsuits from the developers, as you've stated in the, as the zoning commission stated a couple of meetings ago. Um, but that can go both ways, and the residents, especially those that back up, can certainly bring suit. That's more than enough ammunition if you guys knowingly pass this. And these kind of suits have already been brought. In fifteen minutes just Googling, I found seven communities, two of them in Michigan, that have brought suit against townships for similar ordinance violations. So please take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else this evening? Good evening.
Hi. My name is Fred Meisterfeld. I have a 2368-
I'm sorry, your first name, sir?
Fred Meister-
Fred, thanks.
Yeah. And so I volunteered to read something for Kylie Wood-Broth and Scott Gentry, 'cause they couldn't be here today.
Okay. What's their, what's their name again?
Kylie, Kylie Wood-Broth and Scott Gentry.
Do you know either their address?
Uh, yeah. It's eleven oh seventy-two Matthew Lane.
Okay. Did you get that?
No.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, our names are Kylie Wood-Broth and Scott Gentry. We live in Heritage Meadows at eleven oh seventy-two Matthew Lane. We are against the construction of a twenty-four-hour convenience store slash gas station slash drive-through slash donut and ice cream shop. We agree with the statements made previously to ours, and we would like to add more objections. We would see as five points. One is, the first one is during the meeting on July sixteenth, the engineer said there would be an underground tank to hold runoff water. Does this tank simply fill up until overflowing? Does the tank drain into the ground surrounding the tank? Does the, if the tank does not drown, what is the plan used for the accumulated water? The second point is, is what happens if the business fails? Do we have another oasis and mobile gas station on adjacent corners on M-59 and twenty-three that nobody wants or dares to use? And, uh, point three is, where is the disaster plan? If there is such a plan, what does it entail? And point four is, during the meeting on July sixteenth, the builder stated that maintaining a six-foot wall is too difficult. Can't the builder figure out how to build a wall that is a minimum of ten feet tall and that is reinforced into this ground with steel? There are many walls in many cities that can be used as an example. And then, um, the fifth point, the last point, is traffic flow. During the July sixteenth meeting, the builder outlined traffic plans for the drive-through. The plan stated that the drive-through traffic should make a U-turn into the parking lot if it desired to make a left turn onto Clark Road. Further, the planning commission proposed an island at the south exit to make it clear there was only one right turn at that exit. Who in their right mind, who in their right mind is going to believe this is going to work? Well, so people will simply exit at the south and make a left onto Clark. Look at the U-turn sign at the intersection of Heartland Road and M-59, for an example. Almost every time we have been at that intersection, we see cars making illegal U-turns. Next, look at the intersection of Roe v. Drive and Heartland Road. There is an island there to direct people to turn right, yet there's a Taco Bell directly across. How many people simply go straight across? After all, the reverse direction allows people to go straight. What about the passerby who's using mug and bobs? What if they wanna get back to M-59? Well, they will likely have to, they likely will not know where to go. So in that event, they will make U-turns into Heritage Meadows, which is obviously even worse. Either at the south or north entrance. Failing that, they may even make U-turns at the Heartland Township Hall entrance. And do you want that? So, um, in conclusion, they say, uh, "We feel deeply for the two families at the south entrance of Heritage Meadows. One family has two young girls who will sleep on the second floor of their home. Would you want your daughter sleeping in a room bathed in light from a twenty-four-hour drive-through gas station?" And that's pretty much the letter. I don't know if you guys want the letter.
Uh, I don't, we don't think we need it. Do you want to take it?
Yeah, Larry, he's gotta do the minutes.
All right, I'll get it to him.
Okay, thanks.
And, um, I just had one question. Um, you guys are talking about, there's three entrances at this particular gas station, right? So there's two entrances and exits, two on Clark and one on M-59. Now, the, uh, I can't think of any gas station anywhere that I've ever been that has this particular type of setup, you know? There's, I mean, they have one on, like, they would have one on one, one on one major road, and then the second one on the second major road, right? They wouldn't have two on the road and one on another road. I've never seen that. So I don't understand why this one needs to have that. And second off, the middle line, the middle one or the south exit, like these people are talking about, which is gonna have a right-hand turn to lead? Well, that particular one, people are just gonna make the U-turn. I mean, that exact intersection exists at the Taco Bell at Heartland, and nobody follows that. So I think that whole, that whole thought should be revisited, 'cause it just doesn't work.
Thank you. That'd be for the planning commission to review.
Yeah, I know, but I thought I just, he's on it. So anyway, I just wanted to point those thoughts out to you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks.
Yep. Anybody else this evening? Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Matt Ickhorn. I'm at, um, one zero five four one Fawn Ridge Trail, and, um, first I apologize for earlier falling down, and I-
No problem.
Anyway, I just, the only reason I came up was because I just wanted to offer my services. Um, I moved here in Heartland in November. I was in Grand Rapids, excuse me, Grand Rapids for a very long time, and I helped with, uh, sidewalk, uh, construction. I, I served on the committee for, uh, disability advocates, which, um, helped the Grand Rapids Board with that particular project. That was the main topic last month, and, uh, I just merely came up to, uh, offer my, my opinion and services on that, if that's-
Matt, I appreciate that, and I believe there's gonna be a, uh, Pathways Task Force, perhaps, starting next year?
If the-
Maybe. But, um, we will, we will definitely keep you in mind, and if you could, like, drop your telephone number off so we can contact you when that comes along, that'd be great.
Not a problem. Thank you. Bob's in the back.
Oh, Bob's in the, yeah.
You can give it to Bob in the back.
Bob, see Bob back there waving? He's our Department of Public Works Director. If you can forward that to him, that would be wonderful. Thank you. And is there anything else this evening for call of the public? Good evening.
My name is Melanie Sobieski. I live at two three one three Lorain Lane in Heritage Meadows, and I just wanted to say I agree one hundred percent with what has been said today.
Thank you. Does anybody else is coming up? Call of the public is closed, and then we'll move on to item number six, which is approval or consent agenda.
So we'll support.
Motion by Trustee Colaini, seconded by Trustee Harper. Any discussion? Being on, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Uh, our first presentation is our annual audit with John Pfeifer. We had our, um, briefing of the audit before this in a special meeting for about a half hour. Um, with that, John has been with us for several years, um, and our manager, James Wickman, is going to, um, put, um, some of the highlights of this up here so everybody in the audience can, can follow along. So with that, Mr. Pfeifer, you have the floor.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Well, I first, I'd like to start out saying thank you for having, uh, our firm as independent auditors. It's always a pleasure to, uh, work with the staff here at Heartland Township, and it's something that we look forward to every year. With that, I would also like to say thanks to the manager, James Wickman. During the audit, he's very helpful with answering questions on, uh, issues that come up during the year and, uh, explaining different things that we find in the minutes. So again, I'd just say, uh, thanks to, to James. Also to Susan Dryden-Hogan. Um, she does all the accounting, keeps it in great shape. And the item I'd like to mention there that's so important to the board is that, um, when we come in and we do the audit, there are times when we will propose adjustments, and again, it would be up to the township to make those if we did, but there are very few of those kinds of changes that we have here at Heartland. So the importance, again, to the board is that the, the financial statements that you are receiving during the year, budget to actual, are very accurate to help you make, you know, decisions, you know, as you go through the year. So, again, you know, from our standpoint, that's very important. With that, too, as part of our audit, we're also looking at the, uh, condition of the investments of the township. Obviously, that's not part of the scope of the audit, but it's important that, um, you know, the, the investments are clar- clarifiedized, and, um, we found that, again, Kathy Horning is doing a great job there to make sure those funds are protected. Uh, we are pleased to report that we are issuing an unqualified opinion, which is the highest level of opinion that the independent auditor can issue. Again, I'll clarify that these are your financial statements, we're just issuing an opinion on them. With that, that, that's very important for a couple, uh, reasons. One is, the state of Michigan immediately reviews it to make sure that you have an unqualified opinion so they can continue with revenue-sharing monies. Also, should the township have to go off for bonding? It does affect that. So, uh, again, we're pleased to report that it is an unqualified opinion. As far as, again, on the financial side, um, I do want to report that the township was able to add to their fund balance, and, again, that's, that's important from a financial position to be able to meet your, your future obligations. This was largely accomplished by staying within the budget, cutting costs, and at the same time, you were able to, uh, add to the capital improvement fund, which is going into different projects here in the township, which everyone's glad to hear that where their tax dollars are going. So, with that, I'll just open it up for any questions to the board.
Well, we had some discussion about our, our fund balance, and, um, we do have one year's revenue and more like a year and a quarter, or even approaching a year and a half of expenses. And what, in your expertise, where do you see other communities that are similar size to us or in our position when it comes to the fund balance? What's a, what's a good goal for a community? Uh, 'cause we are actually talking about that amongst ourselves right now, and, uh, maybe you can give us some insight what that might look like.
Uh, yes. What we found is, again, going back to what Heartland has done, you've adopted a fund balance policy, which I really feel is, is a good example of what a community should do. The important thing is you're saying that we don't, we will never let our fund balance go below, uh, fifty percent, uh, which is very important because then you'll make sure that, you know, you can meet your current obligations. There was a point in time over our past economy, and we're still in this rough economy, just getting out of it, where there was a lot of questions about state shared revenues being reduced substantially or cut. And a lot of, a lot of the township residents don't understand that of your total revenues of over two million dollars in the general fund, there's only about twenty-five percent that comes from taxes. Uh, most of it, or half of it, comes from state shared revenues, which is sales tax and different types of taxes that they're collecting. So there was a lot of talk of cutting those, and, and that hasn't happened. They've been going up a little bit. And so, as far as our perspective, as far as a fund balance, we think that in a minimum one times revenues is, is a good fund balance. And, and actually, a lot of communities are above that because, um, there's certain unfore- unforeseen things that come up, um, that, you know, will cost a community monies. We'll, we'll have it sometimes in a utility system where the state will come out with new laws about salt in the water or different issues, and there's gonna have to be a large expenditure made, you know, you know, for those, for those improvements. And if the general fund doesn't have the money to either loan to the, the utility fund or, or to help out, then basically they have to go for bonds or they'll be in violation of state law. And there's been quite a bit of that over the, the last years, new regulations, interpretations of old rules, saying that, um, again, you know, we think that stricter rules should be followed. So those are the types of things that come up, which, you know, again, your fund balance is really right in a good area.
Okay.
Yeah.
Other board members have some questions?
Are there any areas where we should be improving, where we should be looking to in terms of our overall, um, processes?
You know, really, we do an evaluation, we call a risk assessment, of the township's, you know, policies and procedures, and, you know, again, you do a great job. If you look at the management letter, there's very little that we could come up with, even digging and scraping, you know, different things to mention. But, you know, I think that-
Talk about the finance, uh, letter that goes to the state treasurer.
Yes. That, that letter. I, I think, again, you know, when we're coming in for the audit, which is important to us too, is we see where the funds have gone in the township, you know, the parks that you've invested funds in, which has been really good next door, is, is a good thing for the community. So, uh, you know, from our perspective, we just see that you're covering all the bases.
Okay.
Well, I do just have one comment. I, I wanna thank, again, Susan with all her help, and James and the rest of the staff in putting all this together. I think we've shown over the last few years how we keep improving on, on the way we do things, and, um, I think it's just a testament that our auditors- help and, and James and the rest of the staff in putting all this together. I think we've shown over the last few years how we keep improving on, on the way we do things. And, um, I think it's just a testament that our auditors, to you, that you're doing a great job. So.
Okay. Any other board members have any comments? Thank you very much.
At some point tonight, if you could accept our report to approve it.
Entertain a motion right now.
I'll move to approve the fiscal year 2015 audit as presented by Pfeffer, Hannaford, and Halka.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Kalani, second by Trustee Harper. Any discussion? Being none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item, uh, number eight A is, get my glasses on so I can read. Site Plan Number 524-P. Now, P is for plan development. This is Fiddler Grove. This is preliminary, uh, plan development for the Chestnut Development. Good evening.
Hi, Dave.
Come on forward. Um, welcome. This is, uh, the second time that this, uh, development has been in front of us, is following the plan development process. Uh, in front of us this evening is, uh, the proposed plan, uh, that basically lays out a lot of items. And, uh, depending on how it goes this evening, if it goes forward, uh, all of the detail work and engineering and construction drawings would be, I believe, the next on the agenda. I would like to turn this over to, uh, Trustee Kalani. He's our planning commission liaison. And if, Joe, if you'd be willing to give a review of-
Sure.
-what happened at the planning commission, and then we can open it up for comments.
Sure. As you correctly noted, um, Supervisor Fountain, this is the, um, second step in a three-step process for the plan development, uh, under our township ordinance. Plan development is an alternative to, um, the typical zoning classification for a piece of property. Um, I believe this plan development originally went with the property, originally.
The zoning went with it.
The zoning went with it. So, um, before us, again, this is the second, this is up for preliminary, uh, preliminary plan approval. This, uh, development, Fiddler Grove Plan Development, um, is a 25 home, uh, uh, single-family site condominium located, uh, on about nine acres. Um, the planning commission unanimously approved, uh, the preliminary plan at the last, uh, on July 16th. And there were a few couple of items, I think, um, mainly the compliance with our DPW director and some of the, uh, other review professionals, including the fire marshal. Uh, but also, um, there were some landscaping issues, I think, that we, we, we talked about at the last planning commission. And Sucreism took a look at that. And, um, I think we were gonna address some of the, um, just, uh, planting some spruce trees and things like that at different heights. Some of the questions that came from the last board, uh, planning commission meeting were a couple of, uh, folks who are in the Autumn Woods subdivision, I believe. There was some concerns with regard to where the directional drilling or bore, uh, directional drilling for the water, uh, system loop, uh, which will improve the system, uh, for, and provide water to this, uh, development as well. Um, I believe the developer was speaking with some of the residents at the last meeting to address some of their concerns. Uh, other than that, uh, I do, I, I, I would recommend approving the preliminary site plan in this manner. Maybe the applicant has anything else to say.
Any other-
Motion. Move to approve Site Plan Number 524-P, the preliminary site plan for Fiddler Grove Plan Development, conditional upon the applicant addressing the outstanding issues identified by the planning commission on the applicant's mittel of the final site plan.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Kalani, second by Trustee Petrucci. Uh, do you gentlemen have any comments or any input that you'd like to add this evening?
Nope. I think we're all set. It's been covered quite well. Thank you.
Got a question.
Go ahead.
Um, looking at the site plan now, um, I don't see a key on the page that I'm looking at. It, was there sidewalks added to that?
Yes. Yes, there were. There's sidewalks on the-
On one side, right?
On one side of the street, uh, from, from the sidewalk up on M-59, back into this park area here. So you can see it there along the east side of the road. And, uh, the walking path has been eliminated from the plan and blew up the sidewalk.
And the street width is still the same as the last?
Correct. Yes.
What was the width of that? Again, Joe, do you recall the width of the road?
Uh, the street is 28 foot.
28 feet?
Yes.
Any other questions? Comments?
Was, uh, concerned by one of the people who attended a planning commission meeting, and they were concerned about the location and potential contaminants in the stormwater detention pond. Is the, so my question is, is the stormwater pond only anticipating getting runoff from the street alone? Or will the lots themselves drain into the street? I just, I don't know the topography well enough. Are the homes a little lower than the street, for example?
Uh, the homes are a little bit higher than the street. The final design is not done, but likely the front halves of the homes will drain toward the street. Back halves will drain toward the back. Um, the backs of these homes will drain right into the pond. The backs of these homes will drain into the pond. And then in our design, we've kinda got a swell cut in, you know, back in behind here, which will drain, uh, back into the pond in this area. So a, a little bit of both.
And I think that resident is also adjacent to the detention pond for Autumn Woods.
Correct. Yes. Yeah, there's a pond right up in here.
You know, they were from Autumn Woods, man?
Yeah, I know. And it's interesting about that question. He's like the only resident in Autumn Woods that's not on water.
Right.
I, I, I never realized we had one resident and was, it was on well.
Right. I didn't understand if that was a separate well in addition to his pot of water.
I don't know either. It's, uh, it's an interesting setup there. And I don't have an answer for that.
Do you have two, did you say you had two detention ponds?
Correct. Yes.
Yeah, there's one at the south, uh, southwest corner.
This is the detention pond up here. The site, uh, the site really drains in two directions. The front half of the site from about here forward drains to M-59. And we're gonna keep that drainage pattern. And the back half drains toward Autumn Woods. Um, and that's gonna remain as it is today also.
Okay.
At this point, though, I'm trying to recall the procedures from my days on the planning commission. Eventually, when you get closer to final design, won't the County Drain Commissioner's Office review this for stormwater detention calculations, things like that?
Uh, in Heartland Township, the township engineer reviews the, the drainage for compliance to the Livingston County Drain Commission standards. So it will be reviewed against their standards by the township's consultant.
And are these designed for 100% containment? Or will they overflow to other county drains?
Uh, well, they are detention ponds, so they do have an outlet. The front pond drains toward, uh, M-59. There's the outlet pipe right here. The back pond, uh, there was a storm sewer left in Autumn Woods. The end section is up in this corner. And the outlet for this back pond is, is right here in the southwest corner. And it will outlet into the drainage system, which this portion of the site, which was naturally draining back, was figured into those computations.
Perfect. Thank you.
What's in the center of that oval? Is there anything like trees or anything?
Uh, yep. Uh, we do have a landscape plan. This is not the plan that's shown here, but it is a nice little landscape. There's a couple of park benches in here. Yeah. But, uh, actually, there's a-
I'm seeing on the, uh, drawing, uh, I got-
I think it was in the packet.
There they are. Yeah, I don't have that.
So it'll be a common hearing? Is that what you thought?
Correct. Yes. Yep.
If there are no other comments at this point, I'll entertain them. Um, there's motion on the floor in support. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, item number nine A is, uh, Special Assessment District 200. Uh, this is an additional resolution, uh, to the requirement to the regional sewer district to offer an opportunity for those within 200 feet of the sewer pipe to, uh, voluntarily hook up into that. I think we have 17 out of the parcels that are willing to be part of that Special Assessment District. And this is number four of four, is it number four of four?
Yes, the resolution, the last resolution. You've had the public hearing. These are all volunteering. Uh, so this would finish that process up. Next step would be to award the contract. Uh, we're working on that now. Bids have been received. And we're working with the, the qualified little bidder, uh, because each, each site has its own issues. And, and we hope to have that contract back in front of you. Uh, if not, at the latest, at the September 1st meeting, we have a special meeting. We may try to get it moving quicker than that.
So with that, I would entertain a, a motion to approve the resolution of intent.
Uh, wouldn't be the resolution.
That's not-
Yeah, that's, that's for historical purposes. Uh, it's a resolution to confirm the rule, number four of four.
Right.
I'll move to, um, approve the resolution, uh, number 2015. Is there a number that goes with this?
Not until you pass it.
Not until you pass it. Okay. Confirmation of Special Assessment Rule, lien, payment and collection of Special Assessment, Sewer Improvement Special Assessment District, 200 foot, resolution number four. Support.
Motion by Trustee Kalani, second by Trustee Germain. Any, uh, discussion? Being none, I'll have the clerk please call the roll.
Trustee Kalani?
Yes.
Trustee Harper?
Yes.
Treasure Horning?
Yes.
Supervisor Fountain?
Yes.
Clerk Choufue, yes. Trustee Germain?
Yes.
Trustee Petrucci?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number nine B is land division fees. And Manager Wickman brought this, uh, to our attention, that, uh, they're out of line. Uh, and this would be good news, I would think.
I think so. And I'll, I'll give full credit to our planning director and assessor and finance director, uh, for coming together on this. Uh, normally when we, you know, do land divisions, create new parcels, there's quite a bit of work involved. And the existing fee structure reflects that. Uh, we have to acknowledge that when it's a site condominium with a master being involved, there is less work. And so we thought it fair and appropriate to adjust, to provide a, a different fee for that. And we've got a number of those pending. And we'd like to make that change to their benefit.
So you're lowering the fees?
We're lowering the fee. That's the long version of lowering the fee.
That's the key part.
That's all that's important, right?
Highly unusual.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution regarding land division fees.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Germain, second by Treasure Horning. Is there any discussion? Being none, I'll have the clerk please call the roll.
Trustee Petrucci?
Yes.
Trustee Germain?
Yes.
Clerk Choufue, yes. Supervisor Fountain?
Yes.
Treasure Horning?
Yes.
Trustee Kalani?
Yes.
Trustee Harper?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number nine C is a MDOT performance resolution. For us to do any work in the median that the township, uh, maintains on M-59, we need to have permission from MDOT, uh, to do that. So that's what, uh, this resolution pertains to. I think it, the last one expired. Is that, we just have to add it? What happened?
Uh, basically what this stems from is the proposed M-59 median improvements. And the fact that, uh, we're bringing the water treatment plant operations in-house, we will now have field workers. Um, it's an annual resolution that we'll look to pull. And it basically covers us, uh, it's a blanket permitting for the year, if you will. So we just simply call them up, let them know what type of work we're doing. And it's, it's rubber stamped, if you will, if this resolution is passed. And we'll have to do it on an annual basis.
This is MDOT's standard resolution, correct?
Yes, exactly. They require it for any municipality who would pull multiple permits in a single, uh, on an annual basis, I should say.
So I'm not quite sure what you said. Uh, you, you said it's an annual one. Does that mean we've already had one in the past?
We haven't, but we haven't really performed work out there.
But we should have?
Our township hasn't, and Heartland Township staff hasn't. However, our contractors have. And therefore, they don't pass a resolution because they don't qualify as a municipality.
Yeah.
So they have to actually go through the permitting process.
Okay.
Does this allow us to also, you know, along, um, I've just been noticing that the state hasn't really come through and cut some of the, the median in M-59, you know, all the way down to Tipsico. There's like long stretches of time. I mean-
Yes.
Would this permit us, if we so choose, to hire a contractor or someone to come in there and trim that?
It, it would. We could pull the permit in our name and, uh, simply put on the application that they're a subcontractor. Um, what this does is it expedites the process. It's simply a phone call. And they say, you're good to go. And they'll send an email confirmation over the phone.
Okay.
And just as an example, we're trying to do the concrete apron at the water treatment plant. And we're going through the standard, uh, permitting application. And it's now taking, uh, three months. So just an FYI, the fact that if we could pick up the phone and get it approved within 24 hours, it will certainly, uh, expedite all the work that we may have in the MDOT right away.
Any other questions?
I'll move to adopt the performance resolution with the Michigan Department of Transportation.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Kalani, second by Tre- Treasure Horning. Any discussion? Being none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Uh, resolution.
I'm starting with a resolution.
Resolution.
Uh, clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Harper?
Yes.
Treasure Horning?
Yes.
Trustee Kalani?
Yes.
Trustee Petrucci?
Yes.
Trustee Germain?
Yes.
Supervisor Fountain?
Yes.
Choufue?
Yes.
Okay, number nine D is park maintenance budget amendment proposal?
Yes.
Bob West has a recommendation for us?
Yes, just, uh, in the first year maintaining Sellers Park and, uh, a little more additional maintenance on Heritage Park. What I'm proposing is to essentially, uh, double the existing, uh, park maintenance budget. Um, the pathway has become overgrown. And right now, the frequency is to simply brush hog it three times annually. Um, the problem is, is it's a higher cost to actually mow it when the grass is very tall. Um, we could potentially, by doubling the frequency, get to where they bring in a standard mower. And it, what it would reduce is the, uh, clippings to basically blow onto the path. Uh, right now, they're, they're all over the path. And it, it looks poorly maintained. It's somewhat of a poor representation. Um, the fact that we're doubling it was just simply based on doubling the frequency. However, I do believe there will be a cost savings because we're not, we won't be mowing the higher grass. So, um, we're not gonna wait till it gets two foot tall to basically knock it down. So I don't anticipate needing all that. Um, but it also covers if we have any kind of minor tree issues on the path or anything like that. We did have a small tree that had to be cut up. We had it in our, uh, enough money within our budget to accommodate that. But moving forward, um, I just wanna make sure we have adequate funding. Additionally, um, we're, DEQ is recommending that we, um, increase the scope of our retention pond mowing. Um, I don't wanna get into any sort of violation with that. Their best practices, um, for retention ponds indicates that it should be mowed, uh, more frequently than what we are. So just something that we could certainly knock down the area around, around our pond out at Sellers Park as well.
So you're saying this about doubles our budget for-
I'm requesting that.
I mean, it's about, I know, but that's about what it is.
Yes. It's exactly double. Based on just simply doubling the frequency.
Yeah.
However, I do believe there would be a cost savings by not having to wait till it gets two foot tall.
Yeah. Um, I mean, I think it's a great idea when you showed the pictures of the, you know, brush hog all over the blacktop. But when we're starting to talk these prices, I really think at some point we should talk about, really, it's a mile path back and forth. And we could buy a mower and pay somebody here. But I know we're gonna get into, are we gonna put the mower and all that? But when you're starting to talk these things, we can put up, you know, I, I just think it's something we should start thinking about a little bit. Two parks, so. That's my comment.
I can bring my baler over and bail without, you know, to worry about it.
You know, we actually had somebody do that several years ago. We had a bee or someone go in there and bail that. Is it, is it worth anything to bail it?
There's a lot of ragweed in there.
Yeah. Well, you have to recognize that we've had like 90 inches of rain this summer.
Yes.
And everything is growing like crazy. So, um, any other suggestions, comments?
I have a question. The, um, and maybe Susan knows this better than you, Bob, but we're, you're asking us to increase the park lawn budget and give the code number 101751-802. I'm wondering if that account is for all the parks or just for this specific park?
That is, it is all our parks. I didn't want to speak on your behalf, but it does cover all our parks. We do have some road grading for heritage built into that, and it does cover the existing mowing. We do an actual biweekly mowing around the parking lot at Sellers and right along the front there. That's why that grass looks much nicer than the remainder of the path. And not necessarily that we need to get to that level, but if we can get kind of a compromise in between what's existing and what's around the parking lot is what the goal is.
Yeah, I think the organizations take care of the mowing.
Yes, out at Heritage, the maintenance is very minimal, because it is a responsibility of our partners at that park, as well as out at Springer Field. So the majority of that would go towards Sellers Park. And that does also cover the weed control within the existing parking lot. So there's quite a few little maintenance items that need to weigh at that.
This is for our fiscal year, which ends on March 31st?
Yes.
And the growing season is two-thirds finished already?
Yes.
So you're just going for a high number, don't anticipate using it all?
Well, one thing that we don't have in here, and it's kind of, just kind of planning for it, is if we decided to actually mow the sledding hill that's out there this year, we don't, we're trying to secure pricing for that, but that way, I don't have to come back to you just for that simple item. Any funds that are left over certainly would not be spent, just, but yes, next year, we will budget accordingly. It would be more or less, our retention ponds are overgrown right now. So to knock those down, to get the path knocked back a little bit more, talking with our contractor, he said, you know, in order to get the, for all intents and purposes, that grass off the path, you may have to kind of scoot over another two feet and try and shoot this stuff the other way. So I don't know what sort of costs is involved. Like I say, just for sake of argument, I just doubled it based on frequency, but, you know, certainly, anything is better than nothing.
It's fair to say it's an annualized number, and you can adjust it whatever you might agree to this year, and just its full disclosure is next year, if we did go this route, that would be the full budget impact for next year. And so it's a pretty textbook policy decision for the board, as far as to what level do you want to see those pathways maintained. Some of it, we do need to address the pond better, and so we're just looking for the board's thoughts and feedback on that.
How many times have you mowed already this year?
It's been mowed two times already on the actual pathway. The pond itself has not been mowed yet. We usually wait till just before fall for that, during the fall.
So you still have one more mowing on your existing budget?
I do, and like I say, and then the pond will come out of that, so.
Their scope of work doesn't require them to blow the cuttings off the sidewalk?
No, it does not. That was actually quite a bit more money, actually, than the actual mowing to do that. And we can incorporate that for this dollar amount, whatever's required, the path will be cleared, I can assure you that, for the remainder of the year.
If there's no further questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the budget amendment for 7,500 for additional maintenance at Sellers Park.
Support. Motion by treasurer Horning, second by trustee Harper. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay?
Nay.
Motion carries. Thank you. And the last item is we moved item 6E, which was the HIA agreement. Manager Wickman, you asked to have that pulled off the consent agenda?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Supervisor, and thank you, Clerk Chofu, for catching that. The amendment number three proposes to remove and replace with a new section, a couple of sections, and we had inadvertently included one section that was already overridden by amendment number one. So the copy that you have corrects that, so that all of the preceding, amendment one and two are incorporated, so that we're referencing the correct section to replace and maintaining the dollar amounts as intended. So this, and this is, again, this was, this does match an agreement that we've reached with all the three organizations out there. This would normally be a consent agenda item. We just needed to make that correction, so happy to answer any questions if you have them.
I'll move to authorize supervisor to execute amendment number three to the agreement with HIA and HCSA to reflect HIA Lacrosse separation from HA and from HIA organization. First of all, to approve the formal Lacrosse division of HIA as a separate entity to be recognized as the Heartland Youth Lacrosse for the remainder of the agreement.
Motion by Colani, second by clerk Chofu.
I do have one question, and really, it's not so much related to this, but where, maybe for Bob, I know we had that sign program. Where are we at in that? Can I have?
The sponsorship signs?
Yeah, the sponsorship signs.
Mike Schmidt had just completed them, and then he's on, he went on vacation, I should say. He's supposed to return here shortly at the end of the week. They still need to be painted, and our staff will put them in the ground. We are going to paint and install them. I believe the total cost was still under $900 for both signs. And they mimic the exact replica of what goes into the village area.
Really? Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely.
And I'd like to thank Bob. I worked well with the team, with our partners and that, to come together with us. It was, there's a lot maybe misinformation out there to begin with, but thank you for putting it together. It sounds like everybody's in agreement that this is the right solution to the issue. So I have a motion and a support. Any other discussion? Being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed nay? Motion carries. We are on to board and manager reports. We are in our first meeting in August, and we start with trustee Colani.
I have no report.
Trustee Germaine?
No report.
Trustee Harper?
No report.
Trustee Petrucci?
While at our meeting Thursday, the Heartland Deerfield Fire Authority received their report on their audit of financial statements, and it mimicked the township. It was a very good report. It was a draft, so when we get the final draft, or the final report, we'll make it available to the board. That's all I have.
Thank you. Clerk Chofu?
No report.
Treasurer Horning?
Well, I have to say that last week at the farmer's market, I think it was the best market we had ever had. The weather was beautiful. We had more vendors than ever. The sweet corn was the best. Everybody was raving about it. The trucks were selling out of the sweet corn as fast as it came in. The eggs sold out. It was just a fantastic weekend. If you haven't tried it, you should come on out.
And where's that located?
Saturdays from 9:00 to 1:00 at the Heartland Support, the old high school, that's what everybody calls it, so.
Thank you. I've had several citizens come up and ask me when our new police department's going to be online. And I said, "That is not at all what we're trying to achieve." I would highly recommend that we either put out a press release, or we put something on our website to explain why we're asking for the survey, that we're trying to be proactive when it comes to police protection, as we're not really sure as what the future is for the county patrols, and that we're just trying to get information and be proactive before, if things do change. We don't know if they are or aren't. We're working with the county to see where they're headed. And the jail's going to be open in six months or so, and we'll find out kind of what their being planned is at that point. But I just think we need to do a little bit more proactive and try to quell the comments that we're bringing in our own police department, which is not even close to anything.
The county's been very vague on their direction.
Right.
I think it's important to let the public understand that while the county has a mandated responsibility to man the jail, they do not have necessarily, you know, a mandated authority to have road patrol. And that's become an issue between the sheriff and the county board, as to whether or not they're going to continue their road patrol or continue at the same level that they have it on or expand it. I mean, there's several options the county needs to look at. I think the last statistical information we found, though, is that we had, didn't we have an actual increase in our response time or shortened?
Shortened. Yeah, it's better.
Our response time, even after we've, when we used to have dedicated service here, our response times are still shorter than what they were before, when we had a dedicated service. So although we still should look at that, it doesn't make sense to make, have us look at that until the county decides what they're going to do.
Right.
And they don't know.
But again, yeah, but the survey is at the township online, and we are recommending to anybody that's here or at home listening, that we're just trying to gather information as to what the people's thoughts are. And our state representative, Hank Balpel, from Handy Township, Fowlerville area, is with us this evening. Thank you for visiting with us and sitting next to one of our great heroes. Nice to see you again this evening as well. And I don't want to steal your thunder and your report, but we, you know, we were talking about zip codes and the importance of us trying to get one zip code. And if you didn't see the email, that we were denied that. But there's another layer of a process that we can go for, and perhaps we can, maybe we just need to, I don't know what to do, but. And the other comment was, it was interesting that you said a lot of your tax returns were returned this year. And having a local business that has a hollow mailing address that's in Heartland, I can say the same thing, that more and more of our mail is not getting to us in a timely fashion or even at all. So we should do our due diligence to continue that. I think it's going to be good for everybody in our community to have one zip code, at least along the main corridor.
Do you think maybe we should have a little blurb on our website, shows a map of Heartland, showing where all the zip codes are and what we've done, so people understand?
We've had it up there various times. We can, yes.
I think maybe that might become our new slogan, the township of zip code.
Yeah, we have seven zip codes in our township. There's anywhere from Holly to Milford, Brighton.
Is that true, or is it, are you talking about for the school district?
No, for our township.
For Heartland Township, our tax bills.
I think.
I have a question on that to James. Will there be a point where we get our elected officials in Washington involved with this?
We had reached out to them, and our representative, state representative, did write a letter of support. We are working actively with Senator Peters and Representative Bishop's office to help us navigate the waters. Realistically, USPS, US Postal Service is apolitical, and Congress has very little control over them, which is probably why they operate the way they do. But, so it's a, if anybody knows how to solve that, we're going to keep plugging away.
And this is the second time since I've been here. It's been addressed, and Mike Rogers tried to help us last time, and it's just.
I read that letter, and I didn't quite understand what the heck they were talking about. They use all these abbreviations that they give no meaning to, and you don't even know if they know what they're talking about.
Interesting, well, we're taking a big rabbit's trail, but I was just even talking with Al Spicer, when, in the 60s, when he was a member of the J.C.'s here in Heartland. They twice tried to tackle this issue 50 years ago, and were told no. So this is a longstanding issue.
Okay, if there's nothing else on board reports, manager report?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Just to compliment, a couple of things mentioned, for the benefit of those who are watching, the survey is up until tomorrow, or actually, tomorrow morning. It is a survey where we're asking for citizen perceptions and opinions about police protection. These are questions that we have asked before. We asked it last year when we were doing the road phone polling work. We asked it in our 2012 citizen survey, and we'll ask them again in our citizen survey in the next year. So nothing, that seems to be the impetus for the rumors, but yes, we're, I'm not interested in starting a police department. We're looking to measure interest in that. And so, and also to back up what trustee Colani had mentioned, the conundrum for the county is that, yes, they constitutionally, they arguably don't have to require road patrol. The tough thing that we've talked about is our residents do pay taxes to the county, and they have provided road patrol historically. And so if the county's making a decision to slowly, slowly eliminate road patrol, how does that, how do we reconcile the issue that our residents are already paying county taxes for that service? So those are the tough, many moving pieces that make this difficult. The other things to highlight from the operation report, just a reminder on our retreat next week, 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., you all have some information on just getting lunch. If you could get that information back to me, so we can make sure that we have lunch covered, so we can keep that as a working lunch. If you, or if you don't need your copy of the audit, just let us know. We always have use for those throughout the year. We'll keep them on file. I will be sending out an email with drafts of those policy manuals. If you could take another look at those, I sent them out before I left last month, in anticipation of our board retreat conversation. I think that will be relevant to the discussion. And then, I just also wanted to highlight as well that Mayberry is getting ready to do test wells on the site for potential drinking water. And then also note that the comprehensive plan will be coming back to the board at the September 1st meeting for that amendment, for the update. Otherwise, I know our goal is to be done this evening in order to get out on the M-50 on medians, but at the 8:30 at the latest, so we don't have much more time. But I'm happy to answer any questions from the operation reports, or?
Nothing? Well, we'll take a brief recess, and we'll start our work session, and let's see if we can get through the village drain. Bob's still here, so we'll take a couple-minute break and.
Can we just go ahead or?
Just a couple-minute break.